Introduce them as being here.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
First you do your routine.
Right.
Then in the four.
In the, in here? Introduce them.
No, you can do it in the attendees.
Okay.
We also have guest speakers.
Gotcha. Okay, good evening. I am Sarah Graham, Chair of the Stratford Planning Commission. It is Tuesday, August 20th at 6:31 PM and I'm calling the meeting to order. I will now call on the following elected members to speak up as present. Alec Lecola.
Here.
Steve Rowe.
Here.
And we are joined by our alternate Ed Kingston.
Here.
I'd also like to welcome Sussmita Tatar, our Town Planner, and Aileen Marsh, our Recording Secretary. We are joined by guests Jay Hibansky, Town Zoning.
Planning and zoning administrator.
Planning and zoning administrator. And Harold Watson, Chair of the Zoning Commission. Okay, I'd like to remind everyone that we have no public hearing items for review tonight. The public is free to listen but may speak only at the invitation of the Chair. If any of the members wish to discuss any item on the agenda, please raise your hand. I will call on you. Please identify yourself by name and title each time you would like to speak. The first item on the published administrative agenda for this month is the approval of the regular July 16th 24 minutes. Can I get a motion?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of July 16th, 2024.
Thank you, Alec. And a second.
My second.
Thank you, Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous, okay. Next, we have, is that after Greenway? It is listed after Greenway. Okay. Right, so we did that, so now Greenway update and then this update. Okay. So now we have the Greenway and Complete Streets Subcommittee update. Sussmita, if you can brief us on that.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have major updates tonight. All I can say is that Phase One is going on in full swing in front of Town Hall. You might have seen the new crosswalk connecting the fire station building to the Town Hall. And I think based on the schedule that John Casey has laid out, it looks like the implementation will be done by September end. And then, you know, we will be moving on full speed with Phase Two design process. We had a workshop last month at Paradise Green. A lot of people, people and residents came and offered their input. So the consultants are now revising the drawings based on the feedback that we received and the 60% designs will be ready sometime in October for review again. And we probably will be holding another public meeting at that time. And that's all I have to say for now.
Great. Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion on that? I think we're good. Okay, so next on the agenda is the Town of Stratford zoning regulations draft update. Jay?
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. Commission members, thank you. My name is Jay Hibansky. I'm the Planning and Zoning Administrator, Project Manager for this project, along with the staff in the office who've been helping craft these regulations over the past year and a half. In addition to, and we are really staffing the zoning commission and their progress and helping us to essentially update the and rewrite the Stratford zoning regulations, which have not been touched significantly or updated in the past 80 years. So part of the goal of this project was to bring the Town of Stratford into a more current state for development, update our use tables, remove uses that have not been around, I would say, in maybe 80 years, like pleather or feather plucking factories, and start to add in uses that we get questions about on a daily basis, such as, you know, food truck parks or open air restaurants, things that probably weren't considered when the zoning regulations were drafted back in the 1940s. And so that we have, the town has a bit more control of development here in town, encouraging the type of development and the businesses that we would like to see, as well as making it more interpretable and easier for staff to enforce the zoning regulations. As you can imagine, a lot of the language that was used and written in 1945 is quite different than how we speak today, making it quite challenging for some of, to interpret how how we interpret the zoning regulations essentially. So about a year and a half ago, we hired SLR, Robert Collins, who was stuck in traffic, he should be here momentarily, was hired. And so we really started from scratch. There were 33 chapters of the zoning regulations. As part of our reorganizing, we joke around and call the zoning regulations the junk drawer because that's truly what it feels like. You have similar sections really spaced out, talking about the same items throughout the 33 chapters. So we have reorganized the zoning regulations and condensed them down to seven sections. We've really lost very little content. If anything, we have updated the language on them to make them more understandable. And we've also made the formatting far more consistent. So I'm not, I believe you have the formatting style sheet that we have here. You know, as, you know, attorneys have modified the zoning regulations and different planning and zoning administrators have, and zoning commissions have modified their regs over the years. They had been done in different styles and different formats. One of the things we wanted to do is we wanted to clean it up and really make the style and format consistent from start to finish. So another thing that I wanted to add is, you know, of all the changes that we've made, I would say 90% of these changes have been stylistic changes, with the 10% changes remaining of those changes being quite significant, addressing housing in town, how we treat housing, how we enforce residential, you know, different uses and residential neighborhoods. And those are the big changes that the zoning commission is really tasked with. You know, listening to the feedback that we get from our workshops, listening to the feedback that we get from the various commissions, like the Planning Commission will be visiting with the Stratford Housing Partnership in a few months at their next meeting. And really, you know, when we went out to RFP for this project, one of the keys, the key criteria for selecting our consultant was we wanted the goals and action steps from the Plan of Conservation and Development, which you all are quite familiar with, to really guide the zoning regulations and our updates. So, you know, that was a key part of what we were trying to achieve, as well as all the other plans, like the housing plan that was done by the Stratford Housing Partnership, the work that's being done by the Complete Streets and Greenway Committee, the waterfront harbor management plan, really trying to draw in from as many of these long range plans that the town has undertaken and allow the zoning regulations to kind of mirror what folks and the commissions wanted to see. So not only do we take from the various feedback that we got from the Planning and Plan of Conservation and Development, and I can, Commissioner and Chairman Watson of the Zoning Commission can confirm that, you know, a lot of times when we have our zoning commission meetings, you know, we'll work through our agenda and then towards the end, we're kind of chatting before we adjourn. And a lot of times we'll talk about, you know, this needs to be fixed. You know, why are we making folks come to the zoning commission for a public hearing to do an accessory dwelling unit for a family member? We should, this should be an administrative, and I'm just using this as an example. This should be an administrative item. And so for the past nine years since I've been working here, you know, I've been taking notes and, you know, I've got a 15 to 20 page document of items that I know the commission has expressed interest in changing. And so that has also guided many of the changes that I know we have consensus on from our commission. And I'd like to welcome Robert Collins from SLR, who is coming. I know traffic is bad out there. Come on in, Robert. Yeah, nope, no problem.
Good, you got my message?
I did, thank you. No, no problem. And so not only have we gotten feedback from the Plan of Conservation and Development and all these other long range plans, but the real, the real life challenges that the zoning commission has faced on our, on our monthly agendas. So, you know, before we let Robert, we'll let Robert settle in and I will turn it over to Chairman Watson to see if you have any other comments. If you don't, I'm happy to kind of keep things moving.
Just generally. There you go. Oh, we are just now, there are essentially 30 relatively large changes. 10 of those, we're really going to have to spend time with line by line and deal with those as part of our, we've been doing additional zoning meetings to cover some of these. Where we've now kind of identified which of those, I think we have four or five right now that we really are going to have to have discussions. We're going to have to sit down each meeting and take one of those sections and line by line discuss what is possible. We also have discovered though that some of the things that we're talking about, we need to go back to lawyers and make sure that what, what we could ask for is even legal. We want to make sure that we're not putting something in there that we're going to open up another legal case. So our purpose is to solve some of the litigation that's been taking place. But the real important thing is, which I really appreciate what Jay has done over the years, is we have the same, the same set of problems that come before us again and again and again and again. The ADUs are the same set of, you know, lot line, lot line distribution on, you know, everything else. And I know it's the same with planning because I was on planning. You guys get the same kind of questions. So the more that we can do to solve those makes our life easier, but it also helps our consumer. And I think that, reading through the rewrite, the average person can understand what's in there. It makes a lot better sense. There's a logical collection of information together. What type of housing is it? Those are all together now instead of scattered everywhere. And all of the side, the side conversations off a single thing, say an ADU, is all together now into one section. That won't last forever, but for now at least, it should make our life clear and also give clarity to the people coming in for permits. I also think that, I didn't experience it with planning, but I certainly have with zoning, discovered that our planning and zoning office is a hard job. We need to make sure that we, we limit in some way what we're asking them to do, particularly if we're going to ask them to do new things. We've got to take some of this, which takes up so much of their time, and try to put it into these regulations. So we're not looking, we're not looking at it, or we're not giving them a new set of regulations, which is going to be an undertaking for them to enact because they're going to have to relearn everything that they're telling people walking in. But I think that it's doable. And I think that our current administration is committed to doing that. So I'm really excited about it. The second, in terms of the Greenway, because you know that I'm your Greenway person, the second mention in the list of objectives at the very beginning is P O C D, Greenway. So we're trying to marry those into zoning so that we have the support of zoning, such as sidewalks, such as those kind of things, so that they don't have to be negotiated with every development project that comes in, that it becomes clear that, yes, you're going to do this because that's what Stratford wants. So I'm hoping that we'll be able to do it. We're not going to be able to do everything, but we'll be able to do a giant amount of things. And, you know, you look at the list of just types of businesses, it's so much clearer, so much more understandable. And I see it when people come in with projects, particularly small business owners who don't have a legal staff, who don't have all of that. That will actually help them to do a better job in preparing to bring something into us. So I'm hopeful. We still have a lot of work to do. And I can guarantee you that we won't be able to get everything that we would all love. But I'll speak of the Housing Partnership. They, because I am on that as part of zoning, and they sent us a letter a year ago that we came up with a statement from Housing Partnership is, this is what we would like you to do in terms of affordability and also in terms of ADUs. And so we've managed to fit in a great deal of what they want in terms of regulations. But now we have to make sure the lawyers say this is compatible with state law. The good thing about all of this is the conflict between Connecticut State and Stratford has been reduced 75%. We are much more in line with what the state is asking us to do so that for the developers coming in with projects, it'll be clear for them what they need and what they can expect from us.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I think you hit it right on the head. You know, of that 10 to 15% where the major changes lie, a lot of them are realigning the zoning regulations to be consistent with the Connecticut general statutes, which they probably were 30, 40 years ago. But those state laws change and our regulations never did. So we're trying to bring them back up to speed and to make them more flexible so that when they do change, we are always consistent with those changes. So, and Robert, just so you're aware, we kind of took them from start to finish with the goals of the RFP and how that has guided our process and, you know, where we kind of sit today. And so at this point, I'll turn it over to you if you would like to, you know, begin to guide the Planning Commission through some of the questions that we had for the zoning commission, the substantial changes and as well as the substantially new sections. And so we would love to try to kind of give a quick overview and get through the changes first. And then if you all have any questions, we would love to, we'd be happy to try to answer as many of those as we can. Oh, and last thing. The zoning, the zoning office, Sussmita, Dan Brennan, myself and Aaron, we are living in a regulatory limbo right now because we're putting so much work into these regulations while operating the new zoning regulations. So it's really, we're having a tough time trying to figure out where everything is and where everything will be. So we are really excited about hopefully wrapping these, this project up this fall and getting adopted this fall. So with that, I'll turn it over to Robert Collins from SLR. Thanks.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank, it's a pleasure to be in front of you tonight. And I know that Chairman Watson and Jay have given you a very good introduction. I guess, first thing I thought is maybe, is there any initial questions based on what they mentioned or anything like that? I think the main thing that I wanted to add to everything that they already kind of introduced you to was just to get you familiar with the layout of the new code. And also to put emphasis, which I'm sure they probably did, is that, you know, we want to make it very clear that, you know, this is not a completely new code as far as like the words and text and the regulations, that it's a substantial reorganization. And in some of the documents that you'll see tonight and possibly the documents that you get to review in full later, they'll be in strike through and underlined format, which I'm sure you're probably familiar with. And you will see that there's a substantial amount of the overall document that is not underlined or struck out, which means that it's existing texts, existing regulations that are carrying forward. You know, and we can obviously make those, we're going to be working very carefully with the zoning commission on those type of documents so that they also are very, very comfortable and clear with what is just being moved, but what is also being deleted or changed and what is new. And we hope to kind of bring you into a line with that as well. So the first document that I wanted to just talk about real quick is to get you familiar is this one pager, which I believe is in your packet. This is, this is basically the table of contents or the expanded table of contents of the proposed zoning regulations. And as you may be aware, the current regulations have 32 sections. And so we are condensing that down from 32 down to seven. So right off the bat, you can see that it's already going to be substantially more user friendly because of the fact that it's, it can be much easier, much more easy to find things because they're going to be in very, only seven sections. And then those sections have very specific purposes. So that, you know, if you want to find a district, you're going to go right to something about a zoning district, you're going to go right to Section 2, which is where all the zoning districts are. And as you probably might be aware, the current regulations, the districts are scattered all over. And, you know, I don't know all the different section numbers, but they're in multiple different sections. So that's clearly something that's going to make it much more user friendly. The seven sections start off, just to kind of back up a little bit, is the first one is an introduction, which kind of gets the main purposes, interpretation and kind of the effective date and kind of that, like, those type of administrative things right off the bat to kind of get them over with. We then go into definitions, which is also kind of, you know, an introduction type of section. It's important to note that all of the definitions from throughout the code are all being combined into one definition section. There are some definitions that are repeated, but in other locations because of the uniqueness of those definitions. An example of that would be the floodplain regulations. The floodplain regulations are very state statute driven. There's very specific definitions that only relate to the floodplain regulations. And so therefore the definitions are repeated in that section for ease of use. But it does mention in the very beginning of that section that, you know, the definitions should be all, you know, you should look at them within Section 2 as well. Section 3 is the zoning districts, as I mentioned. And that's, those districts are divided into subcategories based on whether they're residential, affordable housing. We wanted to put kind of a spotlight on that section, so that stands out. Commercial districts, industrial districts, other districts and overlay districts. Jay, also add to this if you could, you know, we're not, you know, we didn't eliminate any districts or, you know, exchange the boundaries or anything like that. With the exception of, we did, there was an overlay. I think the theater district overlay is being eliminated. And there is some history on that that Jay might be able to explain.
And you all are well aware of, you know, so the theater district surrounded the American Shakespeare Theater and all the uses essentially played off of the theater being present. There was housing for actors and there was gift shops and things that while, you know, the town is rethinking how the Shakespeare Park is going to be used going forward, we wanted to make sure that we were limiting the type of development there that was going to play off of the American Shakespeare Theater. And so we took the theater overlay district out of the zoning regulations for now and then put it on the shelf. And we're going to, you know, depending on what that end product ends up looking like, maybe we take it back off the shelf and change some things around to make it fit what that end product ends up looking like, so. But as Robert said, we're not changing any zone lines. We're not creating any new zones and we haven't taken any away other than that one overlay district.
There is a short, there is some clarity though because some of our properties have two different zone lines within them, which has always created a problem. And I know it goes back, when I was on planning, it was a problem that we used to run into occasionally also. And there have been a relook at how we relate to those separate zones and do we combine that property into one zone has been interjected into some of the changes.
Right. And also within each resident, like, for instance, in each zoning districts, like for the very specific zoning category, for instance, in the residential, the single family zones, we've, in each one of the districts, we've kind of laid it out so that they're all very similarly laid out. So there's a purpose. There's an explanation of the site standards, like the dimensional standards, and it's in table format. And then it also very clearly indicates what other sections of the code you should look at if you're wanting to develop that property or to amend or, you know, build something on your property. So there's been like a lot of cross referencing. But most of those districts have been condensed down information into like a one pager or like maybe two pages at most, which also makes it user friendly and potentially the staff could print those one pagers out and hand them out. And it makes it very easy to give, like, say a resident comes in and says, you know, I have a vacant residential lot, you know, what can I build on or how can I build on it? And staff will be able to say, point them to that section of the code or hand them like a one page information reference. The rest of the code from Section 3 on is kind of laid out as how somebody would most likely use the code. You know, you would first want to find out what your district is or what zone you're in. Then you would want to look at and how you would develop that by the basic site dimensional standards. Then that would move into Section 4, which is the use regulations and the use, the consolidated use table. So therefore, once you know your district, then you want to find out like what you might be able to open a business if it's a commercial district or something like that. And the one very substantial major change in this particular section is that we have created a consolidated use table for ease of use. And so that consolidated use table, there is an example, or actually it's not an example. It is located in the more detailed document that we gave you so that you can start to become familiar with that. But right now, if you were going to say you were in a commercial district and you wanted to know if you could open up a gas station, you would have to look through that list right now. And they're all individually listed in that particular zoning district. Now you can just quickly look under Commercial Uses, Auto, and then see where, like, for instance, a gas station would be able to be permitted. So it substantially reduces the amount of time to figure that information out.
And I'll just add, the Planning and Zoning staff has used one of these use tables as a little internal document. Someone comes in and says, I want to open up a commercial dog kennel. We would go to our little use cheat sheet and to help save some time of combing through the regulations to find where it was in the zoning regulations. So now, you know, it's so useful for us. We double checked it for accuracy and now are including it in the zoning regulations for any of the users to be able to take advantage of as well.
The use table also indicates what type of permitted use that it would be. Well, obviously if it's prohibited, it's kind of indicated. But if it's a permitted use, but it requires a process, you're going to be able to see that by the symbology that's used. And then if there are special use regulations, because it may be it's permitted, but you've got to meet certain distance requirements or something like that, those are listed also in Section 4, in 4.4. And all of the various uses that fall into that category are in there, but they're also in alphabetical, alphabetical order, so they're easy to find. And also in the use table, it actually clearly indicates if you need to look at the additional use regulations, it tells you what that number is for you to look at.
Is it possible to ask a question as you go on? Just out of curiosity. So the main goal here is to make this easier for people to use and are we also though, when we're defining these uses, changing any of these uses? Or are we just taking the uses that were in the old zoning regulations and moving them forward?
So it's a bit of both. Most of the uses that were, have always been allowed or prohibited in town have stayed the same. We've taken, as I mentioned a little earlier, some of the uses that haven't been around in probably 80 years and are taking those out of the zoning regulations and putting more modern uses that we, we get proposed on a regular basis and adding those in.
And also, you know, in the current regulations, in many cases, when a use was listed as permitted, it might have almost a paragraph trying to describe that use. Well, we worked very closely with staff and we, it was a very careful process where we slowly put them through like a sieve to kind of get down, okay, this is saying auto body, but it's right now, it's giving you like a, you know, a paragraph explanation. We condensed it down for the use table just to say auto body, but the rest of that description that was in the, that's in the existing code either went to definitions or went to those special use regulations. So with that information still there, it's just that it's in a, it's, for the ease of the use table, for the ease of the use table, we narrowed them down.
And an example Robert gave about auto body, for an example, it'll say auto bodies are allowed in a CA zone, you know, here on Barnum Avenue, that have to have, meet the parking requirement, and that they're not allowed to have signs, and you have to have palm trees on the roof, all this criteria that would be part of how they were allowed. And so what Robert and his team helped us do is, like he's mentioned, is filter out a lot of those criteria, put them in other locations, and make the use, whether it's permitted as of right, permitted by a special permit, or not allowed entirely, in a much more digestible format.
If I could just comment, one of the things that does allow us to do that is, we're putting in, where right now, we're asking for green patches, the 20%, where we are putting in native plantings. We're putting a lot of those things right in, so we won't have to deal with it when projects come before us. It will be assumed Stratford wants native trees. They want native plantings. They want 20% of green. They want all of these things will be within those, within those. So it will, it actually should make everybody's life easier. We won't have to spend time explaining it again and again to the whole line of people that are standing up for approvals. So I'm hopeful that this will actually make our life better.
So the criteria will be baked in to the application when it comes to us, as opposed to having to condition native plantings every single application.
One final thing on the use table is that, also of interest, is that once we compiled all the existing uses into a table, and then we put them in kind of like use categories, it was interesting to see that, in some cases, uses that were clearly wanting to be permitted, for instance, in a commercial district, that for some reason, they weren't, you know? And so therefore, with the work of the staff, knowing that it was a use that would be clearly permitted in that district, we, you know, we added that, but it's identified as being something that was added. And then missing uses, too, especially on the more modern side of uses. We were able to clearly identify some uses that, you know, the town wants to see, and there's been some discussion about them, or it's a use that's kind of migrated from one thing to something newer, and we've kind of added those new uses as appropriate.
A controversial example is cannabis. The state now has turned the floodgates open. You can have as many as you want in your town, but we stuck with our two. So we are actually putting, under cannabis regulations, that we can only have two, two retail stores and two manufacturing sites. So that should actually create some clarity, for us, for zoning. It does, it makes a difference, because we're now on our fourth or fifth proposal, people bringing them in. All of those would have been gone had we had this completed.
Section five is kind of a unique section for Stratford in that you had some development types, which is, they're very similar to uses, but they're kind of larger type of uses, or kind of development types. And so rather than incorporating them into chapter four, we felt that they warranted their own section, so that it would be very easy to find. And this includes multifamily, eight units or more development, older adult housing communities, residential open space development, and the planned economic development type. And so, again, most of those, what was in the code now carried forward, but we just kind of called it out in a slightly different way. The multifamily eight-plus development is what used to be the residential apartment section. It's just been renamed to be a little bit more modern. And there were some adjustments, including, and we'll show you that, because that is included in your more, your packet, affordable housing component, as well as workforce housing component, that can be considered for that type of a development. Section six ends up being all of the site development standards. These are the, you know, once you know what your use is, and that you want to develop it, how do you develop it with things like the parking regulations, signage, erosion and sediment control, water resource protections, and things like that? These particular standards are also in alphabetical order. And some spotlights here is that, you know, parking, we really looked at that very carefully, from what was in the code now. We shared some research based on staff's request. And so there have been some adjustments to that, but you'll be able to see that very clear in the documents that we gave you, because anything that's been changed, obviously, is going to be underlined or struck out. The sign code also is pretty, there's a lot of major updates to it. Not so much for, like, what is regulated, but more just clarification-wise. For instance, definitions, there's a substantial number of new clarifying definitions in the sign regulations. And then the sign regulations were also reorganized to be more in modern sign regulations, to make sure that you're meeting the various legal ramifications that have come about from Supreme Court cases and things like that. So we start off with, like, prohibited signs, and then we talk about temporary signs, and then we get into the permanent permitted signs. And then it goes by the type of zoning district that you're in, so that it's easy to find. If you're in a residential district, what kind of sign can I have? Or if you're in a business, what kind of sign can you have?
May I make two comments?
Sure.
One, the signage also now includes a First Amendment right, cleared electronic signing measure, which we, in planning, when I was on planning, we dealt with for a year and a half, trying to come up with a regulation that would make sense. So now there is a, I think, a pretty clear legally binding electronic sign. But the real critical thing in this is, for the first time ever, we will have lighting regulations, outdoor lighting, air pollution, lighting standards. They're not as severe as a lot of places in the world, but they will give us some means of having discussion with any project that's coming in, that we'll be able to be clear about what it is we're looking for.
Yes, that was a good one to mention, Chairman, because the, it came about as a good time when we were developing that, because the state of Connecticut has been responding to what is called, like, dark skies initiatives. And the state recently put out some guidelines for municipal towns to consider. And we were able to share that with the internal working group to kind of see which aspects of that would be best suited for Stratford. And that is an entirely new section that you'll be able to take a look at. And then last section is section seven, and this is the administration, procedures, and enforcement. This is also pulling together information that was kind of sprinkled throughout the code, and it kind of consolidates information about the various boards, administrative reviews, and then the various different applications that would, that are currently already on the books. There was some clarifications based on experience that Jay knew that needed to get clarified, but we're hopeful that because it's all in one location, and it kind of goes through in a logical way, that it will be easy for the general public or the various boards to be able to actually see what their responsibilities might be. And in this section, I think probably the main thing that's new was notification procedures were added. And that was something that we did supply some research to the town staff, and then we, again, reviewed it to see what we thought was best for the town of Stratford.
And so, you know, I think, before we quickly, very quickly, go over what's in your booklet, and for you all to kind of, you know, read when you have some free time, and then discuss maybe at some of your future meetings, you know, what we really hope that the new zoning regulations do is limit the amount of judgment calls that Sussmita, Dan, and I have to make on a regular basis, where the language is gray. It's difficult for us to interpret. And part of what we want to do is make sure that everyone is being treated the exact same way, whether you're building a above-ground pool in the south end, or you're going to be building a 200-unit development in the north end. That everyone is, all the interpretations are easy to make, and they're consistent. And we really think that this is, you know, the rewriting and updating of the zoning regulations are going to allow us to do our jobs more efficiently, more effectively. So I'll let Robert just continue and kind of explain the format of our booklet, that everyone should have a copy of. We presented these to the zoning commission last week. Although, this was on there, we had been discussing these for over-
Years?
For years. And so some of the edits that we may have from last week have not been incorporated into this yet. Like I said, we would love for, as Robert kind of quickly goes over them, you all to review them in your, when you have time, and then maybe discuss some ones that are of interest to the commission at future meetings. So I'll turn it back over to Robert.
I'll just say, speaking for zoning, I pushed, and we're adding in more references to Greenway, to make sure that the zoning reflects what we have in terms of planning, in terms, in the actual regulations, so that they don't have to be negotiated every time a project, a development comes in. What do you do with that 20 feet?
Okay, before we kind of give you a little preview of this document, are there any questions from the other section that we talked about, or anything? Okay. Well, this is the next document we're going to just talk from very quickly. This is the one, I'm sure you probably all have that pulled up already. Obviously, this is the document that was given to the zoning commission. And so this is really just giving you a flavor of what we shared with them. And if you look at the table of contents of this document that's on the Roman numeral two page, section one, this was a series of, I mean, even though we had worked through hundreds and hundreds of questions with staff, and he had also, Jay and other staff had gotten some, as the chairman has mentioned, there was a lot of understanding of, like, direction from the zoning commission from going back several years. We did, after even reviewing that with Jay and staff over the last couple of months, there was a series of seven questions that we wanted to initially talk about with the zoning commission. So the first part is really just those questions. But again, there was numerous other things that the zoning commission had chimed in on already, but previously. And as we continue to work with them, there will be more. So I don't really think there's a need to necessarily go through those questions, because that was just unique for that night. But what I think you might be most interested in starts with section two, and then section three. And section two is a substantially changed section. So even though we have talked about seven major sections with various subsections, these, section two and section three, really give a good preview for the really most substantial adjustments within the zoning regulations. So, and what it means by substantially changed, that means that there's a fair amount of the, those sections that remains, as is, but there was probably some kind of update or adjustment. And if you actually were to go, for instance, under table contents item number 2.1, if you looked at that on page 22, that would be for accessory dwelling units. And maybe we'll just do that as a quick preview of what that, what you'll see if you haven't already looked at that. So that's on page 17.
If I could just add, this is the section that the lawyers are relooking at again, based on our last meeting. So that has not been answered, it will be answered. But this is what zoning has identified as one of our challenging sections. We have nine sections out of this document that we've looked at that's going to really require us to sit down. And this is one of the ones that we're talking about.
But the new sections of the code are all, they all try to be, they're all, we tried to lay them out as similar as possible. So for instance, for this use regulations for accessory dwelling units, it's, the new section is 4.4.2. But every, it has a, it starts with a purpose, and it talks about applicability. In this particular case, there is a definition or two, because they're very specific to this type of development. And then it goes through the procedures, and then the general requirements. What is, and then you, obviously, you can clearly see there's some strike-through and some underline. So this kind of shows you why we consider this substantially adjusted, because there's a lot of strike-through and underline.
And if you look at the first paragraph where it says the strike-through for family members, that is not our doing. That is state requirement now. It's illegal to have family member requirements. So essentially, that represents what the state is requiring us to do.
Okay, so that just kind of gives you an understanding of, like, why we felt that that was substantially changed, and just like, what type of stuff you would be looking at. Again, as Chairman mentioned, we are going to be continuing to fine-tune that a little bit, but you can get a good sense of, like, the direction that that's going in. But if you go back to the table of contents of this document, the others, the other sections of the code that are in this substantially changed include alcoholic beverage, and that's also in the use regulations. And this is primarily updated because of state statute adjustments. So as it was mentioned at the beginning, we were trying to bring the code into compliance with various changes to state statutes, and most of the changes in alcoholic beverage have to do with that. There is a couple of others that are unique to items that Jay and his team had kind of wanted to be adjusted for administrative review, but you'll be able to see that. If you have any questions once that gets reviewed, if you want to get clarification of, like, what was an exact, you know, state statute adjustment, if there's any concern, we'll be glad to kind of clarify where that came from. The next one is boarding. This one is also, was a combination of a bunch of different things throughout the code related to rooming houses and boarding, and also short-term rentals, which is kind of a new thinking. We consolidated this into one subject, but this is also a section that we're legally looking at a little bit more careful. We first, we brought all the sections of the code, existing section together, because we felt they were common subject. But there's some legal ramifications related to talking about family members and non-family members living in a home, and we're trying to make sure that we're using the right language. So that's in review, but it is going to be a section that's considered substantially changed. Seasonal dwellings is something that your existing regulations talk about. And there was a lot of discussion about the process that if you wanted to have a seasonal dwelling, that you would go through a process. But then also, if you wanted to convert that to a permanent year-round residence. I think it was determined by talking with the town staff that that really isn't happening much anymore. Most units have been converted to year-round. But there is that still, those provisions are the primary provisions in that section that are staying. Wireless telecommunications, this one is another section that is substantially updated, but it's to follow more in line with the state statute, as well as the Siting Council within, for the state of Connecticut's requirements.
Sorry, could I go back to the seasonal dwellings, really quick? So in that, I see that the applicability, it's, all that language there is struck, and it sounds, it looks like that language to me is about maintaining a list of seasonal, so that goes away. So when people don't have that ability anymore, does that mean that everything is just assumed to be a year-round residence?
That's correct. Well, and I'll just add a little bit of context. The list of seasonal and year-round residences, particularly down in the beach area, hadn't been kept up to date for 10 years prior to me even arriving here. So, you know, we spent a considerable amount of time to try to wrap our arms around what had been approved, what had not been approved. And so, as Robert had mentioned, and, you know, much of our research had determined, is that a vast majority of these seasonal rentals had been either converted without zoning approval, zoning commission approval, they were getting building permits and things like that. Or just the town had lost track. So essentially, you know, we don't really have the resources, nor see the value in whether, in tracking what is seasonal and what is not. And, you know, I think we're of the mind that if a resident wants to bring their property up to code, meet FEMA compliance, meet building code, meet fire code, and convert to a year-round dwelling, well, the town doesn't want to get in the way of that.
So understood. I guess my question is, is there are a number of- you know, I live down in an association where there are a number of them that are seasonal, that people are only there in the summertime and they don't have heating and stuff. And they pay less taxes because of that, because they're only using a seasonal. So, after, if you strike that language, does that mean that that goes away? That they're going to get assessed as if they're full-time?
No, it's within their right to remain a seasonal dwelling. What tax implications, I can't speak to the tax implications. It'll be a better question for the tax assessor. But we are, we are not going to require a formal public hearing process, special permit for that conversion.
Thank you.
The next section is the multifamily development eight plus. This is what used to be resident apartment, I believe, and there is a lot of changes in this. Do you want to give a little bit of a preview?
Sure, and I will try my best to explain this extraordinarily confusing regulation. That although very confusing, it doesn't work anymore, so we don't have to deal with it all that much. Essentially, the town created bedroom equivalents all townwide that could be used for apartment developments. So, there were 604.5 bedrooms that were allowed for apartments around the town. When a 100-unit development got built in Lordship, now there are 504.5 apartments or bedrooms that are allowed to be built in town. And then one over by Eli Whitney, another 100 units, that came off. And so, there was a pool of bedrooms dedicated to apartments that were allowed townwide. Now, over the years, that had been whittled down to the point where, again, the town was no longer keeping track of these bedroom equivalents. And one of Susmita's first projects, in order to kind of meet folks here in town and go to the different offices and do research, was to kind of get us a baseline as to where we thought we were. And what we determined is that the town had been approving bedroom equivalents over the cap. So, we had to stop, stop any apartment development in town. And the only way you could get an apartment built was by going through the 8-30G, the Affordable Housing Statute, because that supersedes local zoning. And so, what we want, what we are proposing in this regulation is essentially keeping the, almost the identical procedure process for apartments being built in town, just removing the cap and the requirement that you can only have 100 in the Franklin neighborhood and the Lordship neighborhood, getting rid of the caps, keeping the special permit process in place for someone who wants to develop an apartment complex. But also giving not only the town a bit more control about what type of housing we would like to see, but also providing another option for the development, private development world to say, "Well, okay, Stratford has fixed their multifamily housing. Now, we can't only do affordable housing. Now, we could do some market rate housing in various neighborhoods if we wanted to." So, it's essentially keeping the same parameters that Stratford has always had, but removing this arbitrary cap and giving the development world more options for developing within Stratford. So, we have tweaked some of the densities because we know that those, you know, units per acre that were devised in the 50s and 60s are no longer attractive enough for the development formula. So, we have to, you know, the carrot has to be big enough to attract a developer, otherwise they're going to look and see, "Oh, well, and you know, in an RS4 zone, I can only build three units on this two-acre parcel. That doesn't make sense. I'm going to go 8-30G and I'm going to propose 75." So, it's a balancing act that we're trying to find that sweet spot. And, you know, we've made an initial proposal here that may, the dial may end up turning up a little, may end up turning down a little based on some of the feedback we get from future workshops, from the Housing Partnership, from the Planning Commission, things like that. So, we're essentially providing another option for apartment development that we used to have, but then that regulation broke. So... If you're confused, don't worry, I was confused for a very long time on this regulation.
And all of zoning is also, this is a really tough one that will continue to take time.
I mean, I think that the way that it's laid out now, I think it's more clear. But again, the, trying to get people to understand when it can be used and when it's not, you know, appropriate. I think that's, you know, you'll have to go through some applications and things like that. Coastal management is updated, and this has a lot to do with some adjustments with state statute and making sure that the code is compliant with that. A few other town staff requested changes. And then we round out this section with parking and loading and signage, and I kind of gave you a preview about the kind of the changes in those, in those particular sections. In section three, which is the substantially new sections, these are going to be sections which are entirely or almost entirely, you know, going to be underlying text because they're new. The first one is just about the whole entire section number one, which is the introduction. Just because the existing code, they're kind of scattered throughout and we moved them together, and there were some pretty standard things like severability, applicability and things like that that your code just does not have. So, that's why that's kind of considered a substantially new section. But most of it is, you know, legal or state statute required. The next one is the use table. I already gave a preview about that and how that's completely new, even though the uses themselves are not or where they're permitted or the districts and things like that. But just that, that type of a format is new. In the agriculture activity, it's really the beekeeping section which is new to take a look at. Maybe that one should actually be in the substantially changed rather than completely new, but we can talk about that. Special events and temporary uses, this kind of the same thing applies is that there were some updates based on the way the town has been issuing or working with them on like, business licensing side. But we wanted to make sure that that section was compliant with internal processes. Renewable energy structures, you know, this is related to like, solar, things like that. And so, this is definitely an entirely new section. It was something that I think was requested from multiple fronts to take a look at and make sure that the town had some regulations, not opening up the doors to everything, but making sure that if they're going to be used, that they're being regulated very clearly.
And a quick example of that is we had someone who wanted to build a solar-powered canopy for a parking lot, a large 200 lot, 200-space parking lot. They wanted to do several canopies that covered maybe 30 spaces total and be able to provide some alternative energy for the site. But our regulations didn't allow for them to do that. We didn't have, the only way they could do it is to change the regulations. So, they decided, "We'll wait, hopefully you all can fix it and then come back and do something like that at a future date." So, that's just an example.
The next one, mechanical equipment setbacks. This is not something that's a substantially large section, but this was something that we were kind of surprised that, to find out that you did not have any kind of regulations on this. But based on discussions with town staff, we were able to determine that, you know, most codes have mechanical equipment setbacks and requirements. And so, and there were things that they were kind of using, but it wasn't within the code. So, we made sure that that got put in there. Outdoor lighting, I did mention that. This is a section that's coming from the Dark Skies Initiative and specifically from the one that the state, it's not so much the state government, but it was, I think, the, actually, American Planning Association within the state of Connecticut that kind of put it forward. And we picked and chose items out of that that we thought were most appropriate for Stratford.
And enforceable, given our resources.
Right, good point. And then notification procedures, this was something that was long on Jay's list. And we did some research on this too and shared some different ideas. And again, based on the desire to have notification procedures, but also looking at resources and limitations and things like that, we wanted to make sure it was something that was, could be easily enforced and utilized by the town. That's actually the end of the document of the substantially new sections. You know, just for your ease of use, at the beginning of each section, there is a quick table that also gives you a summary, and then it goes into the actual sections. And the sections are actually just completely, you know, pulled out and placed into this document. So, you know, the numbering might not make sense since they're out of, a little bit out of order. But that was just for ease of use of the document.
And so, as we kind of wrap up this overview, we want to make sure that everyone complete, we want to be fully transparent and make sure people completely understand what is being changed in these documents. I mean, it's your town. You live here and you need to understand what these changes are. And so, if there's anything that you do not understand or that you are looking for context or better understanding as to why a change is being proposed, nothing has been made, these are all proposals at the moment. Our doors are open. Call, set up an appointment, come in, sit down with Susmita and I or Dan, whoever. And we'll do our best to make sure that you have a good understanding because I'm sure you are going to get questions from your constituents about, "Why are we changing, why are we changing how many tag sales you can have a year?" Well, it's because there are five around town that have them every weekend and they're running a business. And so, you know, they're really disturbing neighbors. And so, that context can kind of help you all explain when you get questions. So, please feel free to reach out if there's something that you're unsure of.
And please know, both Susmita and Jay will get whatever your comments are to zoning as we're having our discussions. Because seriously, we need as much support as we can trying to get this done. So, don't hesitate to give your ideas to us. Please try to make sure that you indicate what section it is and what change you're looking for.
So, what is your timeline? You said fall, but what are your next steps for the next few months? As far as like, obviously, if I were to read it, it'd be quicker, but like, what are your-
It's a good question, and we're feeling out that deadline. You know, the litmus test, last week was a real test with the zoning commission presenting these major changes.
We were trying to get it so we could come before you and say we had some sense of what we were doing. The next, the next deadline is our workshop.
Exactly. And so, we want to know, we're unsure as to how quickly we can get to consensus. You know, with our first few items on the agenda, we actually reached consensus quite quickly, which is encouraging. So, when you ask, we would love to have this document adopted by the end of November. End of the year, that would be great.
About two-thirds to the 30th point this week. So, that's what we managed to do over the last two and a half hour session. So, but it's going to slow down if we hit some of these really hard ones.
Yeah.
So, but we're still trying at this time.
And it's an organizational feat. I mean, it really is. I mean, to try to get everyone in one room to agree on something, it's not an easy task. And so, you know, it's education. We are, I am educating myself through this process and learning a lot. And I'm sure you all and our zoning commissioners are.
Robert is saying for us, you came away from the last meeting with saying, "I like that, the word was so..."
Right. And also, I mean, one thing that I will say though, because, is that I would say that it may, I mean, it may be a little bit easier than they think. Although I know that they know their boards. But the reason why I say that is because, again, we didn't throw out the entire code. If we were looking at like, a form-based code that was like, or a completely new list of uses, then I would say those types of things would be very, you know, challenging and have to go word by word. But we're hopeful that most people will find the code to be very user-friendly. They will find it easy to understand and that they will find those regulations have been put in focus on those major things that are changing. And we've already shared them with them, you know, so I think that's going to help.
And if I could give you any little hope of the future, I've heard discussions of eventually some of us will become interactive with our GIS map mapping. That a lot of this information, the local people can actually go online, look at their property and have reference to what is in the code for their section. So, that to me is the best word, if we can actually do that. I helped one of our residents with the swimming pool that got killed in the last storm. We had to put it back in, but was no longer performing. And he went online and used our GIS map to come up with the map and turn it to Jay. So, we are changing, and I think we have the potential with this to make even greater changes on the outside.
And I think if, you know, as the litmus test, as we were talking about, like, if we find that there's a section, like, say, the electronic message sign turns out to be controversial, I think what we would quickly decide is that, okay, why don't we take that out of the code now? And that that ends, like, just as an example. And maybe that's something that then gets vetted in more detail a little bit later so that we can get this major update taken care of with just the reorganization. So, people in the town can start using a much easier to use regulations. And, or something, even if it's even maybe like, parking regulations or something like that. Again, if we get hung up on something that's really detailed, maybe we say, "Okay, let's, let's take that out right now" if we need to, but hopefully that won't happen.
These are projects that we've been working on for years. Parking, Susmita, when I was on planning, we spent half a year on going through every single thing. How many spaces, how big they needed to be, how much the restaurant get, how much to stand-up snack bar get. We went through all of this, and it's hard. Sometimes you just need to make the decision.
And we're not going to be quick to pull the plug on a controversial item. I mean, we've come this far, and if we're going to make a change, we want to make it while we're doing the substantial change. But as Robert said, we're not going to let it throw off the project by six months or a year. The time is now to make, to improve this document. And if we find that something is just, we just can't get to consensus, we'll have to evaluate whether or not that's a separate project altogether.
And if we could use Greenway as an example, when we started with Greenway and dealing with the public, there was a large percentage of people who were against it. But in our most recent meetings on the Greenway, we've had support from businesses all over the place. They're like, "Get this thing done, let's get it, we need it, dah dah dah." I think that because we're doing this very transparently, we're doing this with several public input sessions. I think we might be better off than we think, right? So, the short answer is end of November, that's what we're hoping for. Yeah?
Yeah, and there's definitely lots of things that can still be tweaked and adjusted, but we're hopeful that we've laid it out and made it very clear so that you can really focus in on the things that you want to look at carefully. Also, in the very short term, also to kind of answer your question is, there is going to be a September 11th open house that we're working on. That's, you know, we, obviously, we're hopeful that you all will attend if you're able to, because that will be an opportunity to gain more insight. And we will have a couple of activities on a couple of things that we're feeling that we want to get more community input on. And then we're still trying to identify them completely. We did have a workshop also, you know, back in the fall, which you may have attended. And a lot of the information and direction that we got from the public at that was also woven into this document. So, you know, that has, those considerations have also been considered. And then, the only other thing I wanted to say is that as you're looking at the document, and Jay invited you to ask, you know, set up a meeting with him if you need to, if you're wanting further explanation. On our end, we were very meticulous about making sure that we were, where we were moving things from. Because your code right now was, is 32 sections, so things have obviously moved a lot. If there's a section that, as you review it, that you are passionate about or you know of, and you're not finding that in the new code, that's the type of thing that we would like to, you know, don't hesitate to ask Jay that. Because we have a master document on our side that very clearly shows where we moved everything. So, if it's not, and, you know, cross-checking us, I think, is a valid thing to do to make sure that we all are very comfortable with the existing regulations and that they found a new home. And we're glad to, if you're not able to find it, that we can kind of clarify where that ended up.
Just don't ask me now because I don't know where anything is because I'm working on two zoning regulations right now. And I educated Jay, I know, saying, "I want, I need this section, I need to see this section back in." And he dutifully took the note down. This afternoon, I reread this before coming here and found the section that I was asking for. So, a lot is in there, just give yourself, read through it. So, a lot of it, just give yourself, give a read through several times, please.
Thank you, guys. Sussmita, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I want to first commend my colleague Jay for all the hard work and for coming here with the consultant. And of course, bringing the zoning commission chair to the planning commission table, which is a hard task, actually. Our chairman is very, you know, willing to come. And this was a great first draft, and there's a lot of work that planning has to do because I think the process goes in such a way that when they're finally ready to adopt, it's just like any other text amendment. It gets referred to planning commission, planning commission reviews, offers their feedback, whether they recommend favorably or unfavorably. If you do it as an unfavorable recommendation, they would need a super majority vote, which sometimes, you know, could be hard, depending on how complicated the issues are at the last minute. So in order to be making this process much more smoother and helping Jay, you know, succeed in this project is my task, as his staff and as a planning commission staff member. I suggest to you that we would just take bite-sized, you know, research on these sections. Like for every meeting from now on, we would come back with every two sections and, you know, review them together and say, hey, we all agree on this, or we all have questions on this. Or maybe we largely disagree on some items, so I can send them over to Jay. And it just doesn't mean that just because this body doesn't agree with something would automatically get removed, because this is a process that involves so many stakeholders and not just the planning commission. But at least, you know, that way they would have a better sense of what is it that the planning commission can vote favorably and what is it that they probably would need more work on? And maybe if there's something that's being misunderstood or miscommunicated, that's an opportunity to actually iron those details out before we actually proceed with a public hearing before the zoning commission. There also, I think, while I was reviewing the draft, Robert, I just got confused with the numbering. I don't know if I have the right draft with me, because I, I mean, I have, for example, I have two point six section as five point one in the new section on page thirty-three. But I don't know if this is correlating to the table of contents and if I have all the sections here or not. And I just want to clarify, you know.
So, so this document is what will be the, the table of contents in the final, our final zoning regulations. These numbers that you'll see in the much thicker packet, those are just in chronological order, one through three point eight, just as the exercise for reviewing the major changes. So they do not correlate one, one to the other.
For what they just also clarify is that when a new section starts up like thirty-two, which is a good example, that's basically up in the header, the two point six is the multifamily residential. That's in the header that's identifying just this section. But, yeah.
We had the same problem.
But breaking them out and pulling and putting it into this just for the ease of use, that was a little confusing. But I guess at some point, Jay, you're gonna be giving them all the full sections, so that can hopefully be eliminated.
And just so you know, we asked for one section for Jay to give us to take out the link to, so we can actually see the section the way it appeared, to see if it backed up as much as the other one.
And that's part of what we're feeling out, because myself personally, I, I would like to see the underlying and strike throughs to see where the, what's being omitted and what isn't. And so that's how, we're not a hundred percent sure how long everything's gonna take till we find out how everyone is gonna work best, so. But I think we've got good direction and we look forward to getting any input that you all have to help make this project successful, make Stratford better.
Thank you.
Checked around, we're doing really well for Stratford. Other towns have done it with a whole lot more eggs. And so I think we should be happy with ourselves.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, I would start putting this on the administrative agenda from next month onwards. And I will also communicate with our missing members today and bring them up to speed, and then we can start discussing this. And Jay and Harold Watson, who's a member of the Stratford Housing Partnership, will also be attending a housing partnership meeting to discuss the housing amendments proposed in this document. And I think whenever they discuss with them, I will bring that feedback over to this body so you understand what's going on. And then I will be the line of communication between planning and zoning moving forward. And just because of my experience working on the Greenway project and coastal resiliency project and all the coastal planning work that we've been doing, I think, you know, it'll be a nice connection to have, working with this body and communicating to Jay and Robert and, you know, on what we as planning commission are reviewing. And there are many, there are gonna be many stakeholders and many opinions, and some disagree with something, some may agree with something. But like, there's not, I, I don't see this as a controversy if you disagree with something. I see that as an opportunity to make it much better, much bigger, and much more user-friendly. And like Robert said, if there needed to be more time to be spent on something, maybe that's something that they can decide before they want to go and present before the zoning commission so that their adoption process becomes more smoother, just by taking that one section out and just letting the others fall. But because just two days ago, I think, I received a phone call from a resident asking if commercial billboards are allowed on vacant lots in the town, and I said, no. But then he brought to us some conflicting language in our sign regulations where one place it says it's prohibited and one place it gives standards for how tall a commercial sign can be placed on a property. And so this is urgent, this is needed, this is the most immediate step we have to take to make it as user-friendly as possible. But then the bigger issues, depending on how big they get, can be resolved one topic at a time, if we cannot do it.
Just a final word, zoning respects planning. We take very seriously the requirements of the community. And we hope our, we think our job has been made easier with the great work from the POCB that you and the prior planning commission did with the assistance of staff and the community. And all those meetings you guys had, we have taken that feedback and tried to put it into the right, so it's a team effort.
Thank you. All right, any other comments from?
Could I, just, just quickly, just wanted to, just doing the math in my head, we've got October, we got September, October, November, right, so we've got three months to review this. And, you know, what I really like about this is substantially changed sections, nice, you know, because we could really hold in on, on that. And I'm just wondering from an administrative standpoint, should we start taking some of those guys and just say, you know, this is what we should review in our next meeting in September and this time in October?
Right, she said she'll add it to the agenda.
You'll?
If you would like to assign a working task member, like from the commission, like if, if there's any volunteer who wants to work with me, you know, bringing the topics to the commission, I'm happy to, you know, take that help. You can do that, you can, it depends.
I know where Sussmita sits, so I could do that.
Do you guys mind? Is that something we have to vote on?
You could vote on that, just so it becomes official.
Would one of you guys like to bring a motion for that?
Motion that you're...
No.
Almost, you're a cat, you're like that. That was a test.
I, I motion to let Ed work with Sussmita.
I think it's a motion to prepare agenda items for the planning commission discussion moving forward regarding zoning regulations. And you're assigning a task force member, and you're making a vote on it, so it doesn't look, you know, like you're handpicking somebody, but the vote demonstrates that you're actually electing someone from yours, whoever is present.
I recommend then to work on the task force to set up agenda items.
Can I second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, thank you. Thank you for suggesting that and working on that, Ed and Sussmita.
September eleventh, we'd love to see you all.
Yes, on my calendar.
If you have any questions, please reach out.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. One last item before we adjourn. We have hazard mitigation planning adoption before the town council on September ninth. And so if you would like to attend the meeting, you're welcome to. If you have already reviewed the document that was shared before and you have any questions or comments, now is the time, so I can communicate with the consultants and modify the pieces that you don't like to see in the document. Or if you have any questions, I can address those. Thank you.
Good evening.
All right, second that.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ed, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, adjourned at seven fifty-two.